Hold the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. HVAC project update.
You want me to grab one of the guys real quick? See if Dustin's there.
If they have, if they have an update.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's grab any of the workers, see if they want to talk.
Must've snuck out.
Maybe not. Okay. Well, we'll skip that. We can go back to that if they come in. Okay, the approval of the February 20th minutes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Morning Dustin.
Hi Dustin, you want to just stay right there and give a update?
We're moving in, we're up on second floor getting that, getting closer, being wrapped up, and then we're starting to get our sheet metal down and start to make more noise, so I'm sure everybody's been hearing that. So, that's going to be the noisiest part, but we'll be starting a sheet metal on the actual second floor, we got pretty much everything done in the attic now, and we're starting to go into the second floor, so.
Okay.
That's pretty much where we're at, looking pretty good, so.
Bear with you, huh?
Yep. We'll try and, try and keep the noise down to hopefully just a couple days a week and leave peace for the rest, so.
Well, I haven't gotten any complaints from anybody, so.
Well, I know it's noisy, so it, just deal with it for a little bit and we'll get through it, so.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of the claims for payment for February 27th.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment for February 27th, 2019, as presented.
I will second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Utility permits and secondary roads.
No permits. Moving snow, currently we have one road where we cannot get through the drift.
You've got one lane through that, one by our house.
Is that Y Avenue?
Yeah.
No, it is not.
There's one worse?
Yes.
Really?
There is one worse, yes. So, we currently cannot get through it, so.
They go around.
Correct, yes. And Greg, our superintendent's already warned me that if the wind keeps blowing, we'll probably have more roads like that. We will make sure every citizen can get out of their house, but we cannot promise that all the roads will be straight through. We do not own a snow blower, I researched them, they're $135,000, so it's not just something we can go out and get.
When the snow piles, where there were drifts, get so high on both sides of the road, what do you do then?
We have end loaders, we have, what, three end loaders, but, so we go and we try to move it, all that does is move the drift again, and an end loader can only move so much snow in a day, and, I don't know, it's a never-ending battle, so the sun could come up, that'd be okay.
I don't think it'd help with piles.
It'll melt eventually. Then people will call because it's flooding, but.
Well, this was our house, at last week, it took the guy five tries to get through that snow drift, one lane. And then two of them came back later, and like, three hours it took to make two lanes.
Yes. And they're all getting tired. I asked them to work 14 hours on Monday, and, yeah, I thought that, ask them to work that extra couple hours, but, yeah, they're tired.
It does make it difficult when there's only one lane and big piles.
Yes, it does.
But they're doing their best job.
I appreciate it. We've had a lot less calls lately, so I think most people are understanding.
Good. Okay.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I appreciate the information you've sent that I've been able to put on Facebook. We've gotten really positive response from that, and I think your ability to just kind of keep people appraised of what you're doing and how long it's taking. The general consensus that I've been able to kind of see is that's been very good, people just like information, so thank you.
What do you do if you don't do Facebook?
Smoke service, yeah.
Could you maybe, could you maybe ask?
Almost everything that I do, put on Facebook, I put on our county website, too.
Oh, okay.
And if it's something that's going to affect, well, definitely closures, but sometimes moving meetings and stuff also gets sent to a news media, and then what they do with it is up to them, but we do try and.
Everything I told Mike, I also told the time citizen.
Yeah. And so, a lot of times, time citizens will put stuff out there, too.
Did you tell him, too? No?
I don't have his email, yeah. Emails help.
Get him your email.
Okay. No utility permits or anything, then? Okay. Jurisdiction agreement for designated Iowa byways.
This is something the DOT has put together for the Jefferson Highway. Obviously, it mirrors off 65 there and goes through Hubbard. So, I read this, and it doesn't really have, we're just kind of giving them permission, they put the signs up, they maintain the signs, so essentially just giving permission for these signs, and I read, like. Hubbard's kind of proud of it, so, I remember that growing up, you know, I drove the Jefferson Highway to high school every day, so.
Alright, well, good.
So, that stays on 65, it doesn't actually go through Hubbard?
Yes, it does. When it gets to D-65 and 65, it goes just a little bit east, and there's a road called JJ Avenue, and that cuts up through the heart of Hubbard.
Oh, okay. I tried looking at that map and it made me upset. Couldn't see the map they provided.
Oh, okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the jurisdictional agreement for designated Iowa byways as presented by the Iowa DOT, to engineer Raul.
I will second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approve the contract for bridge replacement projects.
We're going to have to table this, so usually the DOTs were let on February 19th, and usually the DOT kicks those back to me in a day or two, and it's been over a week and I haven't got them, so.
Okay.
We can't approve them, but we do, did I give you the bids, Micah?
Mm-hmm.
So, there, you can look at your prices, though, Whitehamin, their owner, he lives in Outfalls, their company's in Dow, so it's kind of nice that we got a local company, that's usually pretty handy for us. So, and not with that many bidders, I can't complain about that at all.
Okay.
That's for two, two cohorts.
Right. It's a combined.
It's a combined bid, yep.
Okay.
So, hopefully next week we can take action.
Alright. Do we need a motion to table those, or?
I'll move to table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Resolution to quit claim a county road.
So, this is bringing about our Sherman business, which we had the public hearings for a couple months ago. He wrote him up exactly like it was decided in the meeting, so. Len was here earlier, spoke to Lance, but did he have anything special to say or not?
Nope, he had covered everything he was concerned about.
Okay. So, yeah, and I believe the way the passed the resolution, the chief can sign it, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to quit claim a county road as presented by Engineer Raul and Attorney Meyer.
I will second.
Any other discussion? Nancy?
EK?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Change of status IRVM department. Can Megan come in? The way I'm taking this is she has an employee that was working part-time, and possibly that was going to end March 1st, but now she wants to keep him on on an as-needed basis after March 1st, at the same rate he was at before, which is $11 an hour.
I'll make a motion, the change of status, moving James Mount to PRN, or as-needed status after March 1st, 2019.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion?
We're just stating that the previous one probably ended March 1st, and we're just eliminating the March 1st, and they'll stay on.
Yeah, that's how I take it. Julie?
Is that the lowest possible hourly rate that's paid by the county? Shouldn't it be higher? I mean, are they paid the least?
I think, I believe one of you had said that Story County, that's what Story County pays their part-time.
Their seasonals.
Their seasonals.
This county, I'm talking about Harden County, because, of course, you know, it was in the paper about salaries received in the county. This just seems very low, and, and, yeah, it seems unreasonably low, but thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Application for liquor license, the Eagle City Winery.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for license for the Eagle City, liquor license for the Eagle City Winery as presented.
What time is it?
It's unincorporated.
I will second.
When you come back from Iowa Falls and you get off 20, it's 1.
On the gravel, they're back in the gravel, in the, back in the wooded area.
160.
Oh, yeah, I don't have that.
Go home and get out your map.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Drive out, I don't know if I drive out there in the woods to find it.
Yeah, don't do it.
Do it, yeah, wait till spring. Okay. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public comments. Nick?
I just wondered if you guys could clarify, public use of a blade on a county road? The reason why I ask is, I've asked some farms about in the spring, when they have ruts in the road, if they can go back and level them off with their box blade. They said absolutely not. I think I've talked to maybe a couple of you, I can't remember in the past, you guys said that's not doable, for the public, to do that. Is that true? And my question is, if that is true, how can they maintain the road? How can they keep it open throughout the night in a winter storm? If they can't drop it in the spring, how can they do it at night in the wintertime? So, can you guys?
Taylor?
I get what he's saying, and it'd be impossible to police if you didn't want them to.
I'm not condoning not being for livestock in the wintertime, but I'm saying, if they won't do it in the spring to help out the owners, level off the ruts, how can they do it in the wintertime?
I fully agree with you. If you can do it in August, why can't you do it in October, so?
So, I think you guys need to clarify that policy. It's neighborly.
Yeah.
Our big thing would probably be their liability.
Right.
But certainly, if I can get somebody to help on my roads, I'm not going to complain about that one bit.
Exactly.
You know, we've had people put down their own load of rock before, and they're amazed when I tell them, "Yeah, you can put rock down the road if you want to pay for it, I'm not going to stop you."
Okay.
But I just find it ironic how, in the spring, we can't do it, but yet they can keep it open all night long in the winter.
I'd say liability's probably the biggest thing, though, right? If they're out there performing work in the middle of the rideaway.
Right. My only question is, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but just questioning, they could do more damage to a road in the spring, or in the summer, than they could in the winter by just clearing snow, am I correct?
Very much so, yes, because now the ground's frozen.
So, I can go ahead and keep snow blowing out in front of my mailbox, so I can actually get some mail?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, you want to come out and bring your snow blower in, do my job.
No, honey, by your own.
So, pardon me, I missed that.
She owns the propeller, her mailbox is above.
Is this something that, I mean, you and Daryl can look into exact legal ramifications, put some type of public notice that, I agree, I mean, what if they damage equipment, are they going to send us a bill? If they damage the road, do we send them a bill? So, Nick.
Moving snow is a lot different than digging in the dirt.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
And gravel and.
But if they turn around and clog someone's mailbox, it's on the middle of the road, you know, it's a liability issue.
Yeah, I agree with you, Nick.
They'll blame the maintenance.
I think your policy needs to be a little more clear.
And we need to publicly let everybody know what the implications are.
I mean, it's pretty obvious you've got to use good discretion, I mean, you can't just stupid.
If there's a whiteout, they hit a car.
Right.
True.
What the hell are you doing out there in a whiteout?
Okay, so, is that something, then, you would want to just work with Daryl then?
I don't plan, Daryl's here, something in the legality part of it.
And maybe do some type of a public, their news release, or public notice or something?
But again, with a thousand miles, it'd be hard to police as well.
Exactly. Yeah. Okay. Other public comments, Julie?
I'm speaking of public notice. Why isn't the Harden County website, like, why can't that be an official, like, public notice, instead of having to go upstairs and look on the bulletin board, you know?
I think Micah usually puts, anything that goes on our bulletin board, does it go in, on our website?
They send it to me.
But a designated, have it officially designated as public notice, and not just having newspapers? That is IO code.
Yeah.
But can, can that be changed on a county level?
I don't think they want to policy themselves into where they're going up to a failure.
I'm sorry, but this is, it's the county's official website, it should have, it should be designated as official notice, and could be posted there easily.
We are attempting to put every single piece of information that is possible.
Yeah, we do, and you know, and I agree, Julie.
In addition to newspapers, have it be officially designated, is that a thing? Can that be done legally?
I don't know that we've.
And I'm asking.
That's a question we'd have to talk to Daryl about.
If it's clarified.
Not, if that was your only place that you felt, if you tried to declare that to be your only.
Not the only one, no. Could you just look into that?
Yeah, can do that.
I don't expect you to just, you know, get, but thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
And like Micah said, we do try to put things, we have county Facebook, we have the website and everything, but we also then hear, "Well, I don't get the newspaper." "Well, I don't do Facebook." "Well, I don't have a computer." I mean, but we try to put it everywhere we can, yes.
I would just like to have, I understand that, and I appreciate all that goes on there, but just an official designation in addition to newspapers.
Yeah, we.
It seems, you know, technically a should-be thing, but anyway, thank you for taking my question.
Doug?
Thank you. Megan and I had three things we wanted to talk about briefly as part of public comment, couple is to promote a couple services, and then answer a question, which was our task for the last meeting about the ambulance service situation.
Okay. So, two services that I wanted to highlight today, the first one is our neurosurgery clinic. Dr. Andama comes and visits our Hamilton Specialty Clinic twice a month, and the second one is our pain clinic, Dean Hydeman comes on a weekly basis to offer those services. Pain clinic is either a self-referral or a provider referral to that clinic, so those are two services that we wanted to highlight.
Okay.
We're proud to say that having a neurosurgeon available in the county is a rarity and a very special thing for us, so if you can answer any questions on that.
Is your pain clinician, is that a nurse practitioner or nurse anesthetist that's coming in?
AR and PCR.
Okay, thank you.
Second task we had, and I made some notes, was to answer a specific question about the ambulance transfer situation.
Right.
And, so I made some notes, and I had some further conversations to try to answer that question. Started rooting with, from this chair is the commentary, which is from the hospital's perspective, and like your roles, we're all taking kind of a countywide view, which is what we do, and wanted to share the hospital's perspective. Couple other things I mentioned is that we're trying to really pick the conversation up from today, because circumstances have changed now that Iowa Falls will have its ambulance service. And I know people have certainly larger histories than I do, but the starting point's today, because now that there is a local ambulance service, it really drives the conversation. The two big questions, I think, that were posed is first, who makes the decision to transfer a patient from the hospital? A scenario had been posed. So, just thing with the people involved, what we'd like to share is first and foremost, it's a clinical decision. Providers and the healthcare teams overseen by the EMS director, and the principles they're using is to try to, number one, avoid delay, which suggests a principle of closest and most appropriate level of care, and the second is patient continuity. And this is similar to what happens in other hospitals now. And clinicians involved in this coached me that these are significant pieces of this whole thing, which is avoiding delay for closeness, and also the continuity side. The reality is, from our view, it's not about divvying up schedules or divvying up potential dollars, the patient's at the center of it, and that was the message we'd like to send. So, what would the process be? And they're carving out specific paragraphs which can communicate to all ambulance services in the county. Transfers from Hanson Family Hospital to another facility will be provided by the closest and most appropriate level of care. There'll be a primary on that. Like other hospitals, Hanson will use the Iowa Falls Ambulance Service unless Eldora Ambulance, for example, brings the patient, or Iowa Falls Ambulance does not have a crew at that time. And I'm reading that, so I want to be careful in communication, they have this jotted down so that we can communicate to all the ambulance services. If neither's available, then other nearby ambulance services will be contacted, starting with the closest to each case. So, that is the clinician's perspective and SARS guidelines, and as I mentioned, they're going to jot this down in writing and communicate that out.
Okay.
So, my question is, then, like McFarlane Clinic, if they get a 911 call at their clinic, currently in Iowa Falls, they say, "We don't want to go to Hanson's," even if it's a cardiac, and that's the closest hospital, take them straight to Ames. Can't we, as a county, do better than that and at least get them the first, because I know the first few minutes are the most crucial, instead of letting us take all of these cardiacs out of county right away, or even saying, "I want to go to Grundy," whatever the closest hospital is, shouldn't that be our responsibility to make sure they're getting the best care and go straight to the closest hospital, no matter the direction given, especially in crisis situations? And I don't think that's happening right now.
No.
My answer to that would be, I think, common things we all agree on, we need a strong emergency services system. Common things we probably could agree on is a strong hospital, strong county, strong county, strong hospital. So, Julie, I, you know, we worked together on a lot of things, too, and I agree, it's a matter of kind of having clinicians and making clinical decisions, so. I definitely, I personally would add, I hear what you're saying, and what we want to do is structure a system so that clinicians are going to make the decisions and have the resources they will.
I think there's a lot of, and I hate to say it, dollars, but there's also care going out the window, the way we have this system set up. I think we still have to do, figure out, I think Dave's worked on this in the past with having the, sorry, Dave, but you've worked on it where you have the, an ALS system going out, dual-page system, north-south, or figuring out how we want to do that, and I think this all comes back to closest hospital, best practice, and getting that, a system that we all can agree on. I don't want to speak on that, but I know that's happened in the past, so I think that's...
They have a cafe out at Ames.
Yeah, yeah, again, what I would offer to answer, if you ask why, there are a lot of clinical variables that go into this, and there's some clinical experts in the room that can answer that, there's a lot. So, what I've learned as a non-clinician is blanket statements don't work to, guidelines work better because there's individual circumstances. But we're all on the same page, just trying to make a system that's as feasible, as sustainable and quality as possible here in our county.
And I think the other thing that, like, city of, working with Eldora EMS in the past, but being in this, right down in this area, is my request, or what I would like to see is, like, more of a 50/50, I know that it's clinician-clinician, but even if Eldora EMS could say, "Week one, I can have an ambulance at your hospital, I'll take all transfers, week one. Week two, Iowa Falls, you get to take that hospital, we'll have an ambulance at you, you get to take them all that day, no matter what," but have that agreement so that you're not running Eldora Ambulance Service out of business and out of not being able to substantiate having their paramedics.
That isn't the system that's being proposed right now, and the guidelines we have at this point.
Okay. Did you say that is or isn't?
That is not.
That was the impression I think I already got.
So, your clinicians are, will make the determinations, Eldora EMS's medical director could then say, "We're going to send everybody to Grundy Center, Marshalltown, Ames, wherever it bypassed," based on their clinical authority, correct? So, if we're just, we're going to let medical direction determine location and destination and care. That's what it sounds like, that your ER director and management are saying, that's what you, they're preferring, so then other entities will have to determine the destination of patients based on the care that is anticipated. Is that, that sounds kind of, yes, Julie?
Are you suggesting that the determination of which hospital to go to wouldn't take into consideration the patient's wishes? I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, I would think that the patient's wishes would come first.
That would come first, okay.
That's how I.
That's all I needed to know.
I don't know if that's what he meant.
Yeah, I think, a lot of times, so the protocols that ambulance services utilize are dictated by the physician that is ultimately responsible for the patient's care, so.
So?
Right.
If a patient said, "Please take me to, oh, Grundy."
Sure.
But maybe Iowa Falls was closer, that the ambulance service would just say, "Well, we're going to Iowa Falls." Is that my understanding, or am I just?
I think that would be up to each medical director's how they write the directives.
But the medical director then could overrule the patient wishes?
If you're having a heart attack, and just as a nurse, if you're having, just a moment.
I'm talking about a patient who is conscious and makes a choice.
That's a different situation, we can do the whatevs all day long.
I'm not talking about an unconscious bleeding-out patient, I'm talking about one who is conscious and wishes to make a better choice. I just kind of.
So, okay, just to clarify this, then, just between, the discussions between you two, then, so this is something, a policy that the hospital will have in writing?
Yeah.
And then this will be something that the Eldora Ambulance would have a policy in writing?
Exactly. And we're using the word guidelines because, again, the professional clinicians know in the room, it's based on different patient circumstances, I heard BJ saying that earlier, because it's high variability in these situations, and so it's really not possible to come up with every sound.
No. But is it possible for the city of Eldora to come to the table and say, "On even weeks in the month, we will have somebody on staff to take all your transfers out of your hospital of weeks that Iowa Falls versus all Iowa Falls, and then they get the crumbs?"
What I would suggest is that the conversation go to where it probably needs to go, which is ambulance service to ambulance service in the hospital. I certainly can't solve that. What I can say is they're going to, we are going to adhere to the principles of closest to care, and the ambulance service, and have the patient's needs drive it, which we all agree on.
Because I think that's where the conversation's done last week, is the letter that was given, and Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the letter that was given was, "Sorry, I know you've done this a lot of years and a lot of time to help us out, Iowa Falls, but we have our own EMS now, and for, we are going to use them out of the hospital primarily, and you only get the ones that you bring to my hospital."
See, that's not fair.
That's what, that's what this conversation was, I think.
You are, doing that endangers Eldora's EMS.
Correct.
And if you're looking to drive them out of business, that's a good way to start.
Let me just highlight that, from this chair from the hospital across the county, no one's looking to drive anybody out of business. Opinions differ, I appreciate that. I would offer up, the right forum for this is the group of the folks who know more about this, which is where you were.
Right, that's.
I do want to highlight for you one thing, though, I would say. Imagine a scenario, then, where you come to the emergency room and Hanson Family Hospital. Should it not be that it be the closest service available? Because imagine a 20 or 25-minute wait time, it could have been three or four. These circumstances always differ. The clinicians will tell you, you can construe any scenario, ma'am. I would just offer up, before kind of making it black and white, I think we stay on the things we do agree with, which is a quality service available to our constituents. It's very difficult to decide very specific scenarios, really, what's going on.
I would just like to see the conversation continue between the hospital and the provide, the ambulance providers, and see if it can be worked out there.
We'll initiate a gathering on that behalf.
That would be, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is the time or if you want to do other business, but I just wanted to give an update or have the city of Eldora give an update of Green Belt Home Care.
Okay.
Yes, last night, we had a special meeting in the city of Eldora, and the council voted to, voted unanimously to get out of the agreement with Green Belt Home Care as a 25% owner. So, we are formulating that letter to the, to the board.
Okay, yeah, okay, I understood that. I'm just wondering, then, will it be the city attorney that will drop the remainder of the papers, make the changes and all of that to the other documents?
He'll assist however possible.
Okay.
Why is that happening?
Just circumstances. There was a request for the city of Eldora to pay $75,000 for employee benefits, to enhance Green Belt Home Care's employee benefits. And we just don't have the money. And to continue to sustain, and to ask this, the taxpayers of Eldora to, to pay not only this year, but other years after this, to employ benefits, that's like double taxing because they're already getting taxed from the county as well as the city.
So, a lot of fact, Green Belt, like, we're staying here?
No.
No. And that's what I wanted to clarify today, too, that Green Belt Home Care, we are business as usual. We went through this last year when Hanson's asked to withdraw from their 33% ownership, when we had three owners. And we had to rewrite our paperwork and our bylaws to have 75 county, 25 city. We have met with a lot of the regional consultants for public health, and we are the only county in the state of Iowa that is set up this way. Approximately 30% of county health, public health are set up where they're hospital-based, and 70% are set up where they're solely county-based. And we just want to set ourselves up where we are the same across the state of Iowa as most other entities, continue business as usual, but just get some of the levels of bureaucracy of boards taken away so that we can just go right to the Board of Health. We don't have a Board of Directors, a Board of Health, a City Council, a Board of Supervisors. It just will lineate all of the decision-making so that we can move forward...
Move faster.
And faster, and make decisions so that we don't have to go through all these levels.
Make it more efficient.
Correct.
Did you, did you say that across the state, the local hospital is usually part of this?
30% of public health agencies are hospital-based. So if you have, a Unity Point might have a, it used to be Grundy County's an example of that. They were Grundy County Hospital, but they were Grundy County Public Health Hospital-based. That's, but they're going back to the counties more and more because there's more laws that say that the county has to provide this service. It kind of puts them on the hook more than the city of Eldora. Or, and we provide more than just the city. We provide countywide and actually a township around Hardin County. So we're, we touch about 10 counties in the state of Iowa.
And Hanson pulled out of it.
That was before Doug. It was not his fault.
Hanson pulled out of it.
Yes.
But now Hanson wants the county citizens to use their facility even though they pulled out.
It's not, that's not the same...
That's a different topic.
It has nothing to do with Green Belt or anything like that.
No.
No, we're just, Doug and I have been, since Doug has taken this position, have had such open communication about making both of our agencies more fluid, about our staff, our staff, our patients and their patients, working together and keeping everything in the county and trying to build both of our establishments and businesses throughout this county. I think that's been very good for both of Green Belt and for Hanson's to have us at the helm and having these conversations. Tough conversations, easy conversations. We're having them all, and we're trying to build the relations between North and South Hardin County and make it all Hardin County.
Right, good.
How does this, Eldora pulling out, how does that affect Hardin County's budget with Green Belt Home Care?
It's the possibility of increasing. I mean, because the proposed change for employee benefits, yeah, that would fall more on the county now. The city wouldn't be a partner in that. I mean, that used to be partnership three ways, and then it was two. And then, so now we'll be the sole responsibility. But it is true, as Dave said, currently, you know, we would have to budget for our share. The city would have to budget for their share. City residents pay the county's general fund levy. And they would also pay, then, what the city would also pay to Julie. So, city residents would be getting taxed twice. And I, I don't think that's, that's fair.
So they're all Hardin County residents are taxed the same?
Right, right. Jessica?
Who's the auditing firm that audited most recently?
Clifton Larson Allen.
Clifton Larson Allen. And is that available online, or do I have to ask specifically for it?
I'd do that, too.
Oh, you want a copy of it? I was going to say, I think I have a copy. I'll bring it to you.
So, are they considered a governmental entity then, if they're only funded by taxpayer dollars and Medicaid and Medicare?
Well, we had this discussion with the state auditors this year. And we are actually considered nonprofits, the way that we're set up is nonprofit, but we are governed by a governmental agency. And because that it's, the way it's been set up, we've done governmental audits in the past, up until this year. They let us do the nonprofit budget. But that's part of the reason we want to get this straightened out, is we don't really fall into any category. And we want to make sure that Green Belt as a business isn't confused. Are we, are we nonprofit? Are we governmental? Are we this? Are we that? And we're about 25% this, 50% this. You know, it's very confusing for the business side of things. But we've been operating as a governmental for the audit purposes, for you to see. That's, the last one we did was under Gatsby standards, so.
But I think from here on out, I understand that that will, you'll be filing as a nonprofit.
Well, that may change with everything, with all the changes. There's going to be a lot of changes in general. And this is just the first day that we got official word of the business change.
Okay.
Business as usual, but all the backend and my paperwork is going to be mounting and, as well as more conversations with the county and Jessica, I'm sure.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I got one. I don't know where this falls underneath, but say these little propane bottles you buy for your torches and stuff? How do you get rid of those? I haven't talked to anybody in this town or this county that knows how to get rid of one.
It's about like batteries. You can go to a battery dealer and get rid of those. I finally found that.
But you can't do propane, can you?
So, I don't know. Taylor, do you have any clues?
Have you contacted, not recycling, but the landfill? Do they take them there?
No, I haven't, because I've already found out, you never get an answer from there. And everybody around here said they've tried it, too. They can't get rid of them. So, and I'm thinking, for this many years, I can't believe not one person in this entire county can answer the question, where do you get rid of them?
22, just shoot them. No, kidding.
I refill mine.
No, 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 he's talking the little ones.
No, I have a thing that I can refill them.
No, he's talking the little ones.
Right, I refill those.
He said he refills them, but that's okay for you.
Right, but for everybody else.
How come?
Can I contact our hazmat team leaders in Waterloo and ask them what the proper way of disposing of them is?
Well, I think so, because not a person in this entire county that I've talked to knows, I'd say the word's not out too good.
We'll make a phone call after the meeting. After the meeting, we'll make a phone call, see if I can get an answer for you.
And then, they don't want it. Now, I'll do the next, that other one. So batteries, why isn't there a place to recycle batteries here?
Tyson's. Tyson's.
Yeah, places that sell batteries, I under, maybe not all of them, I do not know, but...
Drive on a high V, they won't take them.
Well, no, well, I'm talking like car batteries and stuff. That's how I got rid of mine. I knew somebody that, you know, sells, buys, sells car batteries or whatever, or big batteries for equipment. And it was found out that they can take them. So...
I mean, I would just think, if they're so important, why isn't there a place to put them?
So I would check with Tyson's or something like that, like you said.
And I've had a lot of people asking me lately. But I guess they don't want to come in here and talk, so they ask me to, so.
I think we can find that out.
This many years, nobody knows how to get rid of them.
I'd like to see landfill or recycling put out information on those things.
That's why I'll give them a call.
I believe when I was there, they wouldn't take them. But it's been a few years since I've been here.
Yeah, I, we'll see what Lance can find out. He's on those boards.
I appreciate it. I think you'd kind of want to.
I would, I mean, I...
If you try to do the right thing, you can't.
For years, I've been saving them in a box, and they're sitting there like foaming up or whatever.
No, that's apple coming out of them.
Yeah, I know. So, good to know where to get rid of them. All right, thanks. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I got other business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to thank our roadscreer, our sheriffs, our emergency managements, and everybody for last Sunday's effort that they put out there. You guys were on the scanner, I was listening to it. Searching and retrieval, yeah, Dave, you. Even for cars that weren't there.
People not wearing winter coats.
Yeah.
Taking their kids out, getting stranded.
Sightseers.
And a deputy that spent seven hours in the ditch.
Well, 36 hours.
But I'd like to give a special thanks to you guys.
Yes, definitely.
For everything you've done.
Wow, that line is great.
Yeah.
Just took that long to find them?